The potential conflict between onshore fishing during beach hours. And really that stems from the recent spat of not just individuals getting hooks in them as if they come offline, but also the increase or the perceived increase in shark sightings that we've had as of late. We do have, we have an inclination and we have secondhand sort of confirmation that fishers are coming out late at night to do chums off the jetties or early in the morning before our crews come on in order to attract fish to make it easier. And those fish and that chum is obviously potentially attracting sharks as well. So Chief Gillespie, if we kept anybody out there on hours, they are subject to the same fines that would be subject to anybody who's on the beach after eight o'clock at night. That's a summons of up to $500. And Chief Gillespie is also now going to be making it part of his mission in life to go around to every fisher on the beach. Saying that they are caught doing that, they will be paying the consequences. So I think those are the four major issues that were at play and that's where we stand.
So for the, I guess, starting with the last one, the fishing during beach hours. Is there anything that needs to be voted on to, if we wanted to limit that in any way? Or is that already something that's on the books? There's something that's, the chief is empowered to make that decision?
So I mean, chief is, chief is, will be reminding people sternly that that is not to be done and that there's a conflict there. We have, you know, if you're not supposed to be on the beach after eight o'clock at night, no matter what. If somebody is out there chumming after eight o'clock at night, you know, they just brought the prohibition of the beach. They can be issued a summons. I defer to Simone or I could follow up with Commissioner Regona to see if there is anything on the books that makes chumming off the shore potentially illegal that I'm not quite sure about.
Well, I didn't mean the chumming, but I was referring to the fishing during swimming hours.
Is there a conflict?
Right, it's because didn't the other day, somebody caught a shark? Kind of everybody gawked at it at the beach and then they kind of threw it right back in.
There is, there is nothing currently illegal about fishing from the shoreline.
In swimming hours?
Correct.
Okay.
Chief Gillespie wants to talk to the fishermen out there. Move forward and putting it out there and having you vote on it that we're going to prohibit it. So he asks that we wait.
I mean, because my understanding is that we have, there was some issues with some kids or something got hooked, stuck in them?
That is correct, that is correct and that's, that's correct. And that's not necessarily anything new, but it is an issue that we're obviously concerned about. Would be part of the equation in thinking through what we do or do not do with this moving forward.
Oh, okay. Okay. Anybody else got any questions, speak up, I'm just looking at my notes here.
I just have John McNally, one possible recommendation. The area on National Boulevard and the boardwalk Marvell opened new and I hope they have great business. Every time I go buy it, there's, there's a lot of people. Just I guess weekends and or nights in the National Boulevard, Edward's Boulevard area. If the specials could take, you know, special attention. Because I've noticed a couple of, when the lines are forming, the lines sometimes may go into the bike lane where they really should run parallel to the boardwalk railing.
Okay, we'll pass that along to both the owner of Marvell and our, and our police commissioner to relate to the specials.
Thank you.
Yeah, that just reminded me, one other thing that we got some emails about the, I guess, the boardwalk right in front of Marvell that I guess people are eating there and kids are being kids and dropping, dropping cones and stuff. And it's, the boardwalk's getting sticky and dirty and, is that something Marvell is supposed to take care of?
Yeah, absolutely, then they have purchased a power washer.
Okay.
But need to be working out a system to make sure that that's addressed.
Okay, so they'll clean that, all right, we need to just stay on top of them for that. All right, thinking, so this weekend, people will be, boardwalks this weekend?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, anybody got any other questions or comments at the beach?
Well, I'm sure also afraid of, of the chief of lifeguards that back to us and let us know what the fishermen say in regard to.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, we're, we're in contacts, you know, with most of the department heads, but also Chief Gillespie multiple times a day. And we have a dedicated, we make a point of having beach follow-up meetings at least once a week as well. So he'll report back to us, whether it be when we're on the beach with him over the weekend. Donna and I both go on patrols with him as we knew a number of council members do. Or just checking at the lifeguard shack or, you know, we'll speak with chief about it and make sure that we get his feedback.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, anyone else or?
So can that piggyback on my concern and other concerns? Onto, are lifeguards having to save people after hours? With beach topics?
Yeah, I guess we can, since we're on, we're on that. Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I guess this has come up of, I mean, we're getting a little bit of help now.
It comes up every, it comes up every year. We all say, not we, but majority of residents say, why can't we find the people that our lifeguards have to save for when they're drunk and disorderly? Like the woman a couple of weeks ago that told the lifeguard to go. And then went in the water anyway.
So, so there's been a couple of questions that the council has, has thrown towards staff in the last few days. And it's, it's chiefly, A, can we issue summonses for people that go in the water after hours? And the answer is an absolute clear unequivocal yes. That's one of the things that fall into that bank of summons of up to $500. I cannot speak to how that has been enforced in the past, but Commissioner Regona has been steadfast in that will be, since we put into play the other regulations and the other procedures of closing the beach at eight o'clock, he's remained steadfast that that will be strictly enforced. So if there is somebody caught out there after eight o'clock, rescue or non-rescue, it will get enforced. I think the other end of that question is, can we additionally also seek to recoup the cost of services that were employed in rescuing a particular individual? And I don't know that at this stage of the game, we have an exact answer for that. It's something that's going to require a little bit more research if the council would like us to pursue it.
John, what I'm proposing from the email I sent earlier this week on two different issues. I think if our first responders have to go in after beach hours and the city incurs overtime, in addition to the health and safety risks to our first responders, anyone who is disobeying our laws and rules should have to pay any and all overtime costs, including but not limited to, if the next day we have a lifeguard who's off duty, who has to go in and make a save on Tuesday night and then he can't or she can't go to work on Wednesday and we have to incur overtime, that should also be passed over to the person who caused this, these expenses. I think we should look into doing that as an extra deterrent. The one thing I would suggest, if there's a way to do this, that it's not connected to the $500 fine, the two should be separate and apart, almost akin to what we do with zombie homes. If we have to go in and mow someone's lawn because they're not keeping up their resident, their residence to our code, that's something that becomes, I think, a lean against the property. Passes outside of the court system. I think here, our overtime costs shouldn't be associated with the $500 fine. It should be an automatic surcharge, whether or not they're found, you know, guilty that they went in after hours, that's something for the courts and the police. But if our staff has to go in and we have to intervene and we incur costs, and again, it's a safety risk to our first responders, that should be passed along to the people that went in after hours and are breaking our ordinances and rules.
I would like to see what other shoreline communities do because I'm, I'm not really a fan of those acts because it ends up being more work for Ina and her team than the, than the, the intended result. So I'd rather find people $2,000 or $5,000 if they go in after, after hours flat fee. You know, it's not fine because that really sends the message that we will tolerate it and we can't be spending our time, like I said, counting up hours and billing them.
I'm open to any type of formula where they have to pay for the overtime. The concern I have, if we have, you know, 20 people who go in and we have to bring in masses of people to rescue, it's still going to be a nightmare billing people. I think whether we do it on a, you know, a flat rate or we do it on the actual overtime incurred, however it is, it shouldn't be tied to the $500 fine. That's my main thought, two are separate.
Yeah, and, and there's, there's a little bit of a double edged sword to keep in mind too is that, you know, when the beach closes and before eight o'clock is often the time that the surfers are going in because a lot of, they can't surf during the, the swimming hours unless they go to the surfing beach. And so often has been the case, the surfers have often been very involved with pulling, helping rescue people after hours because they're out in the water.
Right.
So, I mean, that happened when we had, what was that, two weeks ago, we, they, they pulled 21. After six o'clock that needed to be rescued and the surfers were part of that.
Right.
And volunteer firefighters do it. We call a lot of good Samaritans, but it turns a different corner when we're paying overtime and our staff is at risk. Volunteer and good Samaritan are great and I encourage them, but we have a staff and we have first responders that pretty much put their lives at risk and they go in and that's who we have control over. The volunteers, we don't necessarily, so I don't think it's really fair that the residents have to put the bill for the overtime because somebody decides they're going in at eight o'clock to swim because they're the exception to the rule.
Right, and that, that, one of our firefighters had to go to the hospital because they swallowed a whole lot of saltwater rescuing people.
Mike, don't we also have a skeleton lifeguard crew that works from six to eight every night?
Yes, yes, there are, yes, six to eight and I think weekends, you have a larger crew. You know, I think of them on a personal note, if it's a sunny day on a weekend dealing with the water and then to do two more hours in, it's just, you know, it's a lot of hard work, it's tiring work even, it's a long work. But I also, to Scott, Scott and Karen, you make very good points and I was thinking of that. The one part that may be difficult to calculate and maybe a flat fee is when you have the volunteer fire department water rescue group that has to go in to assist any type of rescue with the lifeguards. They're volunteers, so it's tough to put a, a dollar value on their time, so maybe a big fee. And I know, we're, we're talking about the beach park now, but I know there's instances where they were called to bay rescues. Sometimes, you know, just people get in trouble, it's no fourth of June. Sometimes people are basically doing crazy stuff. So Karen and Scott, you make both good points, I don't know which way to go, although I, yeah.
I think we gotta flesh it out and get some more info, it's just food for thought right now. I think the bay's a little different because we don't want people, you know, the beach closes.
Right.
They, I think, you know, it's a little bit different conversation, but I think there's just food for thoughts. We can flesh it out and see what other jurisdictions do and maybe get a scale of what, you know, if we have repeat offenders. My main thing is, there should be something on the books and it should not be tied to that $500 fine, which is more of a violation or, you know, more of a court appearance, it should be something administratively.
Okay, staff will track it down.
Thank you.
We'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else got anything on this topic? All right, how about, how about the garage? We were getting, supposedly getting appraisals on those because I guess a fast food chain was interested in property?
Yes, they were interested in purchasing the property. We did, we received one appraisal and then I asked for a second one, we received the second appraisal. We're in the review process of the two appraisals and we will send the council information so that you could see it as well as the staff is meeting to again determine if we move the garage, what is the cost, what is the cost for moving and rebuilding the garage? So I just wanted to give you an update that both appraisals and now we're in our review stage. Ina will talk about the bond, about the garage. FEMA bond, Ina?
Ina, you're unmuted.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, okay, so Donna, do you want me to talk about bonds in general or just this garage one for now?
Talk about the garage and then just talk about the bond in general, you know, the one that we're refinancing our debt. That is not a new bond, thanks.
Fair enough, fair enough, okay. So when we're talking, when we're saying garage bond, actually what we're referring to is note that was issued, one of the projects that was issued to finance the rehabilitation of the garage. It was issued a couple of years ago in an amount of 400, approximately $492,000. And per discussion with the DPW and John McNally, it was decided that since the city is really looking into a different direction than thinking this location and rehabilitating it, that it was decided to really not to bond for this amount because we are, I'm going to be talking about it later, that city is going to be converting all its short-term debt into the long-term debt. So it was decided not to convert that note into the long-term debt and instead pay down principal was it? So that's, that's basically, we borrowed money, we're giving it back.
So, so Ina, just so I understand, so the bond was authorized, but the money was not actually borrowed? It was just authorized to be borrowed?
Borrowed short time, borrowed short time. Every short-term, term note has to be either repaid within a certain amount of time or converted into a long-term debt.
Well, I'm referring to the garage one, that's the same, okay, so we did actually borrow the money then?
We borrowed money, we did borrow money, but we are not borrowing it long-term. We borrowed it, we sat on it for a few years and we're giving it back.
Okay, plus interest of course.
Uh, plus interest of course, yeah, we, we have to pay interest when we borrow. They wouldn't let us, yeah, they wouldn't let us borrow otherwise, so. But, you know, it's, it's a responsible thing to review all the projects and see the ones that are not going forward and, and just not, not bar for it long-term. So it's a good timing for this decision and we're just gonna pay down the principal and we'll stop obviously paying interest on it.
So just out of curiosity, and I know you weren't here at that time, but do we know, if they weren't, if they weren't sure they were gonna do the work, why did they even borrow the money?
Yeah, that I do not know, that I can tell you.
So I can say this was a, this was a FEMA grant related to Sandy and they were gonna do a lot of repairs to essentially the flooring of it. You know, Commissioner Miranda was not on the call, he would obviously get into a lot more granular details than, than I am able to, but it was essentially fixing the flooring, making it, making it more sustainable in terms of flooding and addressing some of the damage that happened to the facility just in the storm. So it was, it was borrowed for, it would have been reimbursed had we expended it, but to date, we just have 500, you know, $500,000 that we're paying interest on and not utilizing it. So if, if the city is considering divesting itself of the property and moving, moving your garage somewhere else, we're at a point where it's not likely that we are going to move forward with investing this kind of money in a project where the next user is just going to demolish the facility anyway. So it's not an enhanced benefit in terms of value at a property standpoint. So rather than continuing to pay interest, just give the half million back. And it does not proclue, preclude the city council from, if things go sideways or, or plans change and to decide that we do want to invest this money, they're leaving the, the work order open with FEMA, we're not closing it out. And the city council could in the future decide to borrow again for this project and we're still in the same spot. But I pay interest on things now when we don't need to.
This is a prime example of, this is a prime example of borrowing money when you don't need to borrow money. When we go out for any bonds in the future for new money, we have to have projects in hand and ready to go. We're not just going to borrow or the guidelines will say you just can't borrow because you think this is what we're going to do if it is not on the timeline. So if, to answer your question, Mr. Bendo, they probably maybe have thought that in a year or two, they would work on it. However, that is not a reason to borrow money and pay interest on it.
Yeah, why pay interest for a couple of years if you're just gonna sit on it? That doesn't make sense.
Donna, John and Ina, this is exactly the type of long-term strategic thinking that a professional governmental staff is expected to do. I am extremely pleased that you have decided to return this money. And again, it's just a testament to the excellence of the, of the staff that I'm seeing in meeting after meeting, from hearing the department head, department head reports the other day to a decision like this, this is serving the residents. So I'm really pleased and very, very grateful, so thank you.
I, I totally agree with you. And thank you for bringing it to everyone's attention, that you don't expend it, just expend it.
Okay. I guess related to, well, I guess there's really nothing to talk about if we're gonna move the garage and all that. That, that, that's just, that's a, that's pure conceptual right now, so I guess there's really not much to talk about there. All right, anybody have anything else on this one or?
Ina.
All right, how about, I guess there was a meeting Monday regarding the MLK Center between some staff and the board and I think a council member participated, any update on that, what, how that went?
Yes, I can just comment on that a bit, yes. We had a very nice and I think very productive meeting with the board of the MLK Center Inc., which is a not-for-profit that is currently utilizing space in the North Park Community Center. I was on the call as well as John McNally and Vice President McGinnis and Councilwoman Trustin. We discussed basically moving forward plans for the center. They're, you know, getting us basically coming up to date with their programming schedules, certain requirements that they're, they're supposed to be fulfilling with us regarding, you know, basically just telling us what's going on in the center, giving us their programming, their scheduling, making sure that we are able to move toward reopening the building because it has been closed due to COVID. So they need to get their site safety plans in order, in order for them to actually reopen. So, you know, talk to them about working on that, moving forward with that. Also, the possibility of an RFP for additional services and moving forward with an updated lease agreement. So I think it went well, we agreed that we would meet regularly and try to do that every other week or every couple of weeks to move forward, so.
And just so everyone knows, every, everyone that is in the city needs an opening plan. The ice arena, the Magnolia Center would, underneath the governor's order, orders. That's all.
Okay, and, and I think obviously one other thing is we want to make sure when the building is reopened, it's, it's, it's fully utilized and we're providing as, as many services as possible to the, to the community. So, you know, we need to look at what we need to do to make sure that happens. Getting back to, I guess, the new normal. All right, anybody got any questions about this or anything?
President, I just couldn't hear the, the attendees, I thought phone headset itself, McNally, I lost the last.
Oh, yes, Vice President McGinnis and Councilwoman Trustin, as well as the board, all of the board members, to my knowledge, except for their legal advisor were present.
Oh, okay, so there are board members that were present of the MLK Center Inc.?
Yes.
Okay, that, that's all I had, I just couldn't hear it.
All right, if that was it, let's see, what else do we, I guess, Ina, it may as well go back to you since you said there was some other bond stuff to discuss about the refinancing, so why don't we talk about that?
Sure, so as I mentioned before, when the city needs to finance projects, capital projects, what we do, we borrow short-term, we borrow short-term with bond anticipation notes. The notes usually to mature in a year and they can be refinanced for up to three years. So as of now, August, the city did not go to markets to refinance any of its short-term debt and to convert the notes into the bonds. City didn't do it for about three years now, so now is the time to go to market. And I don't know if you recall, probably back in February, we were talking about doing that, but every time you convert, you issue bonds, you, your, our credit rating agency reviews our credit rating. And back in, that would have been back in December and January and it was decided that it was not a very advantageous time for the city to convert any of its debt to long-term debt because the city's management situation was very unstable and that's 33% of the rating. So as of now, our rating is BAA two, it was just reaffirmed by Moody's and actually it's a pretty dismal rating, but that being said, the fact that we were not downgraded during the time when the general federal state and local economies are in such a bad shape, that's really talks to, that's a positive, that's a positive news for us. So hopefully, next time that we are talking to Moody's, we can actually improve our rating at least to the stable outlook. Right now, we have a negative outlook still. But that's to be expected again, given the times that we're living in. So we did not convert debt to long-term debt in February because we were not sure of the rating and didn't want to have a downgrade. And now is the time to convert. And on August twentieth, the city is going to sell forty million eight hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars of non-taxable bonds and two million three hundred and sixteen thousand of taxable debt. Again, this is an accumulation of multiple years' worth of issuance of notes. It's not something that, that's, the only new piece of debt that we're issuing this time around is very minimal. It took two and a half million dollars. And that's really, I'm relatively new to the city, but looking through the issuances of the debt, I do not really recall to have an issuance of new money, what they call new money, of less than seven million dollars. So we're at two point five million dollars. The debt, as I said, is going to sell on August twentieth. And we are planning to close on Thursday, the third of September. A lot of projects included, you know, old money, the ones that we're refinancing. It's a lot of old projects. Some of them are completed, some of them are ongoing. It's about a hundred and fifty-three projects. I actually sat down with the department manager that's responsible for each and one of those projects. And we discussed the status of the project, when it's going to be completed and the amount of money that's needed through the completion. And on every single project that does not need amounts that were borrowed for it, short-term, we are returning this money and paying down principal with it and not borrowing long-term. I don't obviously know any details until bonds sell, we wouldn't know the rate. But they're to start maturing in twenty twenty-one, in September twenty twenty-one. And the forty million dollars non-taxable piece is a serial bond scheduled to mature every year through twenty thirty-five. And the taxable piece is to start maturing in twenty twenty-one. And the last payment will be made in twenty twenty-seven. And I think that that's about it. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
I guess I'll start. Interest rates for the, I guess, converting the bands to the bonds. Are the interest rates comparable or is there? And I understand it'll be whatever the rates are the day that the bond is actually put up for sale. But I'm just saying, do bands tend, because they're short-term, tend to be higher, lower? Or the bands and the bonds normally in the same ballpark?
Bands are generally higher.
Bands are generally higher, okay. And I guess my other one, now you were saying this was like a hundred and fifty-three projects because it was mostly capital. But one thing I guess we kind of discovered this year in doing the budget is that the city around two thousand twelve started putting what should have been operational items and purchases into the capital budget, which they should not have been doing. So are there things in this that were, should have been operational expenses? In other words, I guess what I'm getting at, are we now going to pay? Let's say we bought, I don't know, a truck, whatever, or a police car. That probably should have, you know, that it maybe has a five or six-year life expectancy. But now we're going to be paying it off over fifteen years because we're now, didn't pay it off as a band. I mean, is there a bunch of that in here where we're going to be paying for stuff that is no longer useful to the city, but we're still paying for it because of the way it was purchased?
Okay, so a couple of things. First of all, a lot of those projects that we are now converting to bonds using this current philosophy, right? And not putting items less than, let's say, a hundred thousand dollars, even with the longer useful lives into capital plan and not borrowing for that. You wouldn't, you would see a lot of the projects in that bond issue that do not comply with that philosophy. So that being said, we, a lot of those, a lot of those projects, a lot of those purchases do have longer, even though the amount could be small, they tend to have longer useful lives. And definitely, as I said, we're using a different approach. And we're at about, right now, we're at about thirty-three percent of what borrowing for new money compared to what was usually borrowed.
So John, one of the things is that any monies, say for example, when I looked at the list, there were monies borrowed for items for five thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, which should have been operating. So when we make our first payments toward the bond, those small items have to be paid off first. Because you've only, if you had an item like a truck or say a computer and you bought it and the lifespan of it is four or five years, it's taken us three years to get to this point. Well, you paid three years' worth of interest. So the very first payment we make on the bond has to pay that computer off. So yes, to answer your question, in the past, when things, when the operating budgets, for whatever reason they needed to balance, they moved a lot of small items to capital and monies were borrowed. And that's why we are working with CMA to come up with a capital budget policy so that only things that are certain threshold can be borrowed.
Okay, yeah, I mean, look, I mean, we can't, what's done is done. All we can do now is clean it up, clean up the mess. But I guess we just need to be conscious going forward that we're not taking thirty years to pay off something with a life expectancy of five years. That just doesn't make sense for the taxpayers.
Yeah, the markets would actually, like Donna said, would not allow us to do that. So the bonds are serial in a way that we pay the portion that's due for those items with the shorter life, useful lives in the first couple of years of the bond being outstanding.
Obviously, for something like the new water tower, that makes perfect sense. That thing's gonna last, you know, eighty years. So that's a different story. But, yeah.
Yeah, we have anywhere from two million dollars project to twelve thousand dollar projects.
Right, I guess the point is our kids shouldn't be paying for something that's been sitting in a scrap heap for ten years.
No, but something like a water tower, like you said, that was the city, many millions of dollars. That's obviously, there is no other way to achieve it than to borrow for it. And that's justified by the fact that something like that will be in existence many years after it's erected.
Okay, do we expect that the refinancing is going to impact our debt service in any way? Or it's just gonna stay about the same?
It's going to probably be lower than it was in the last couple of years. Because like I said, we're hoping for better rates on one hand. And on another hand, there is another caveat to that. Every time those notes were coming due in a year, the city was obligated to pay out of general fund, to pay a certain amount on each project out of its general fund. So, yeah, we're expecting the debt service to, again, that, it all depends on the interest. And the markets are volatile, but it would be a positive impact on the city's finances.
Okay. So I have been monopolizing this. Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, who is the, who is the city treasurer that's gonna sign off on this, the issuance?
The city treasurer right now is David Frazier.
So he will be on the bond issue, his name and signature, right?
He's the city treasurer as of now, yes.
Okay. And then, we had borrowed, what was it, four point two million at the beginning of this fiscal year?
At the very end, in May of two thousand twenty, we closed on May twenty-seventh, yes.
So that affects this current fiscal year in terms of operating costs, is that correct?
That is a deficiency note. The way that they're built is because they had, we closed that note a day after the new budget was adopted, which was May twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty. That note actually matures on May twenty, becomes due on May twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty-one. But because it was done during this fiscal, after the budget was adopted, we actually have one more year to pay for it. So there was no provisions made in this budget for the repayment of this note. And the plans are to refinance.
So basically, that is a short-term debt, and we are not including that in this bond issue? We're not rolling that into long-term debt yet?
No, something like that you cannot roll into the long-term now.
So that means in two thousand twenty-two, we have to budget for it?
Okay.
Right? So where's the hole for next year already, four million?
Four and a quarter, yes.
So, so, excuse me, but some of that was due to, basically, it was the shortfall COVID generated late in the year, too. So if we get FEMA, if we get, well, not from FEMA necessarily, but if we get COVID reimbursements, because we have been tracking that, because some stuff will be eligible for reimbursements, would that be applied to that note to pay down the principal?
So everything and anything can be applied to repayment of this note. The reason that we had to borrow was because it was really not on the extraordinary expenses associated with the COVID, but it's really the loss of revenue. And the city is not going to get reimbursed for the loss of revenue. But whatever we're gonna get from the government for the reimbursement of expenses associated with this, yes. We can apply towards the reimbursement, but that's really minimal. It's maybe half a million dollars.
Right. So we wouldn't, that wouldn't artificially lower this year's expenses? We would really separate that and put it towards the deficiency note? Or would you just let it hit the bottom line this year and artificially lower expenses?
So when we're going to receive the reimbursement, it actually will be recorded as a revenue. And it will be, we will see how the city is doing towards that because that deficiency note, we have no penalty for early payments. We can make as many early payments as we want or need. So we will evaluate the city's financial status. Maybe in the next couple of months and we'll decide if we have any resources, access resources beyond what's in a budget and what's in a cash flows that we can utilize towards paying down that debt. It will not artificially lower expenses, no.
It'll artificially increase revenues?
It will artificially increase revenues, yes.
Okay. All right, and then has the New York State Controller's Office reviewed this proposal at all?
Sorry, say it again, what do you mean?
Has the New York State Controller's Office reviewed this proposal at all since they're monitoring us?
Yes, yes.
And, okay, also, I've noticed that I had to go research these bond issuances in the past on my own. And it was something that was accessible to the public. I would like to make sure that even if the council chooses not to read it, that they receive PDFs or printed copies of the five hundred pages or however many pages the actual issuance is.
I will make an effort to put whatever, I have in electronic format. And now all of this come to me in electronic format. I will make sure that everything is posted on the city's website.
Okay, because it can't be.
We can send a copy once we get the final. I've been in the meetings and I've been reading the POSs. And we've had, I think we're on either our third or fourth draft. So Dave is the treasurer. I have been reading and reading the POSs and working with Ina to make sure everything is in it. And so again, once we get the final draft, I mean, the final, then we'll send it to you all and then you can read all the pages and we'll post it.
Because it really talks about the fiscal state of the city at this point in time. So if anybody wants to know the state of, you know, the fiscal state of the city, anyone in the public can read it. Because it's available. That's it.
That's all, Karen. I have just a couple of questions, Karen. You asked a couple that I was going to ask. Thank you very much. Ina, thank you for your, a lot of hard work in this.
Thank you.
You had mentioned it's about a hundred and fifty-three projects. At one point, we were thinking about a software tracking module to better track these types of projects. Have we gone forward with that software? I think we were hopeful to get some type of grant-funded project for that. I don't know.
I remember that as well, Mike. It was.
Yeah, it became difficult because like projects like this are multi-year. Could be three years useful, like five fifty, like John Bendo said, it could be eighty for a water tower. So the start and stop, the start and the stop of a project, you don't really know where you are in a certain, are we ten percent, are we eighty percent? And I thought that the software would be an excellent idea to make Ina's life and everybody else who has to deal with these type of issues much easier. And then they hopefully could press a button, then the council member asks, you'll know where we are at a certain point.
That's actually, I'm sorry, you're not done.
You can answer, I have like three or four more, but if you can answer that one, that'd be great.
So that's an excellent question. There are a couple of solutions that I know of that put together all this bond issuances and that actually can, that actually can generate report and have fields to input information that's specific to the bond issuances that right now, our GL system doesn't have that. So I know of solutions of the software that specifically designed for these purposes. And it would be absolutely amazing for the city to have it. That would allow us, whatever takes me hours to get to the reports and that, then we're talking about many. uh, whatever takes me hours to get to the reports, and that, then we're talking about many millions of dollars and many, many different projects. And, uh, I would, uh, I, I have to, um, use Excel for these purposes. And then obviously, because Excel is a, is a very powerful and great product, but it does not allow for the audio trail, and actually, there is no checks and balances built into Excel. So I have to run it, and then check myself, and then recheck myself. And then, um, obviously, we're working with, uh, the CMA, and they are looking, um, at it with the second pair of eyes, but, um, it, it's, uh, it'd be amazing to, to have a solution like that. They're generally not very, um, expensive, and, uh, um, hopefully, we can, uh, talk about it with the next year budget.
Yeah, no, I, I would fully support that, I was hopeful that, um, and Donna, this, Donna, this was before you, you became involved in the city. I think we, we had met maybe early January, but I, I know it's a time saver, both labor costs, and it's also something that is good for the DPW and any kind of management. So I'll move forward on, on my next, um, topic. Karen, you had asked about the borrowing, Ina, you answered it on May twenty-first, uh, the budget year, you, you explained that. Um, we, part of the reason that we borrowed before May, the quarter in May, because of, we, we were expecting a large amount of money from state aid in, I think, June, which we didn't get. Um, and the beast closing and the revenue and things like that. So, Ina, when do you think, since we were projecting a loss, or, or Donna, either Ina or Donna, where we may have, uh, somewhat close to actual numbers for closing of the fiscal year?
Okay, um, I'm gonna start answering, and then Donna can, um, add to it, um...
You don't have to answer exact numbers, you could just be like approximate, you know, I, I understand.
So, um, there are a couple of, ob- obviously, this is, uh, non-exchange kind of an environment, right? Non, a non-exchange, uh, in terms of, it's not something like a for-profit company would sell cars and know how much money they're expecting to get, and, um, accrue expenses accordingly. We, um, a large portion of our, uh, revenues come from sales tax, and the last payment of the sales tax that thirteenth to fiscal two thousand twenty is not gonna be received until October. So technically, the final numbers are not, uh, um, just for that reason, right? We will not know until October. Another piece of it, that's pretty material, is we did not receive, as you mentioned, the state aid per capita. We had budgeted three point two million dollars, but we received six hundred thousand dollars less than that. So the thing of this six hundred thousand dollars, I'm not sure where, we, we know how to treat it at this point, because, um, the, 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 without the legal action by the state legislature, this amount that we were supposed to receive cannot really be lowered. So it, it will be like give and take of about, um, you know, a couple of months until we're done. Uh, but for the most part, we should have a good idea, uh, the, where we are at, and be able to identify those items that are still in gray because of the timing.
Right, right, and well, thank you for that, because that's what I
Sure.
what I recall, and those are, even though it's one or two items, those are one or two very large items.
Material, yes.
Yeah, um, I think that's all my questions, thank you, um, Ina.
Sure. Any other questions?
No, thank you very much, Ina.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, how about, uh, there was, uh, an idea floated about, uh, people that, uh, are improperly disposing of their masks and gloves. I think anybody that's been out walking around, seen some people, especially the disposable ones, are throwing them on the ground. Um, I know Scott, if you wanna talk about it a little?
Yeah, currently, we have two different sections on the book, section twelve point one, which is improper disposal of refuse, and twelve point two, which is hospital, medical, laboratory waste. I think we need to come up with something, the gloves and mask, I think, fall somewhere in between. They're a little more, um, you know, important to discard properly than regular refuse, but I don't know if we wanna raise it to the level of hospital and medical waste, which I believe sometimes needs an actual, um, medical waste container, if you've seen them in the doctors' offices. So I think we should talk, again, just food for thought, talk about some type of modification where discarding gloves and masks, um, higher fine, maybe not to the level of medical waste, but we need to deter people throwing them on the street, we need to encourage proper disposal. A lot of those could, um, lead to infection. What, regardless of your position on whether or not you should be wearing a mask, if you're disposing of masks and gloves, we need to direct how it has to be done, and then enforce a way to make sure people are doing it. So I think we gotta revisit those two sections and see if we can carve out something in between, much like we've done with plastic bags, with latex balloons. I think we should, um, not now, but we should sit down with corp counsel and figure out a way that we can hide in this as a deterrent. So that was the only suggestion I had.
Um, the team and I will definitely get together, um, and look at, look at those sections and then come up with something for you all to review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody have any other discussion on that topic? Uh, uh, how about we circle back to, uh, because we've talked about this at previous meetings and stuff, the, uh, boards and commissions and where we are knows, uh, COVID kinda brought some of that to a standstill, but, uh, um, might be time to, uh, look at that again, I guess, because we put out some, I guess some people had put out, uh, put in applications to be on some of them. So, uh, wh- where are we with, uh, with that?
I've received all, um, as of today, I have received all of the applications and the entire list for every board and every commission with the dates that people will, um, their expiration date of being on the board or the commission. And we are starting tomorrow, actually looking at them and looking at the resumes to see which commission, um, they want to be on, to see if we need to put back out that we still need additional people. So I received that, um, earlier today, and we're gonna start working on it tomorrow.
Um, I, I don't feel that we've had a, given the residents an adequate, adequate opportunity to, um, learn about each of the boards or apply, um, I would...
Yeah, is that something that we could, like, we should be able to bring up, like, before, I, I don't know?
I think we should use a city email, explaining, uh, you know, just like the messages that have gone out for the beach or not. Um, because if we really want to be an inclusive council, we've got to get new people into this process. Not the same folks that we all know and love, but we've got to get new faces. And these are our future leaders of Long Beach, so I really wanna see some, some new blood and see, uh, and open up the gates as wide as we can.
Yeah, I don't, also, Donna, uh...
Well, I was gonna say, what we can do is post the description of every council or board, uh, or commission, um, on the website. And then say, and then just have one general, if you would like to apply, how you should apply, um, so that people can look at it.
Okay.
Um, yeah, Donna, um, I know back in January or February, early February, um, quite a few, I, quite a few people did apply for different things. Um, so I guess there was, um, and a demand or an urge, and they did, but then COVID hit. And then, you know, obviously, it changed, and it's almost six months later, so... I know in the interim, the people that did submit interest in serving on a board, um, I don't know, because they asked me where we are on it, are they gonna be an interview, what's the process? I said, I really don't know, um, once we get to that point, you'll be contacted. So there could be other people that may have an interest in serving. So I, I would support some kind of notice out there, just as a reminder, maybe a ci- city website or, or whatever avenue you would decide that is to, uh, re-energize the interest, you know?
Uh, I'm, I'm also just not clear, um, right? We had fourteen inactive boards and commissions when we spoke in January or February, um, based upon, um, I think Mr. Barrios had, uh, done some research, or Mr. Kalninsky had done some research on that. So I don't even know what boards were, you know, we're talking about or commissions.
Currently, I'm still on the, I'm still listed on a board that is, uh, hasn't met, and I sent, uh, a former city manager, uh, a fine letter at one time. So, I, you know, I still could, it, it definitely needs to be addressed. And this is, I, is this where we should hash this stuff out, on how it should be done?
I know, I would think that, first of all, I need to look, like I said, I just got the information yesterday. So I need to look to see what the information says before we sit down to try to hash it out, um, and see where we have our shortfall, see where we have people that terms are expiring, see what commissions are, have not been, uh, viable, are they still viable? And then we come back to the council, um, and, and then talk about it, yes.
Uh, yeah, that's definitely fair, thank you. Yeah, I would prefer we, it, one more conversation with the council before we reach out to any potential, um, applicants, because I, you know, just not confident in everything that we, uh, everything that's going on here.
Fair enough.
All right, um, anybody got anything else on this?
I'm sorry, Karen, what do you mean, you're not, are you not confident in?
Um, I apologize for that term, that, uh, the proper, proper, um, language to use, uh, Donna, so I apologize for that. My bad.
I just wanna understand what, no, I mean, before we start talking about, um, contacting people, we have to sit down and talk about the people, because I don't even know if everybody submitted a resume or if they just submitted a name, um, because I just got the phone.
So I, so I agree with you on that point, but I'd wanna even take it a step fur- back further. I don't wanna talk names till I understand the purpose and objectives of, of the boards and commissions, because there are at least a dozen that are inactive, and there are some that are, are active and maybe don't have a charter, you know, a, a small charter, like, explaining what each board and commission is. So I think we have to go back to square one, look at, look at the city charter, see what the boards are, see what boards we want, see what the objectives of the board, and each board or commission needs its own one-page charter about what its responsibilities are. We need to get that all together, some are gonna be more complete than others right now. And then we can talk about the actual people we want on these boards and commissions, or that, or the applicants. Because we have like an aviation board, you know, there's all these, you know, public safety board, you know?
I understand what you're saying, now, what, actually, some of the boards that are inactive, those are, that's the process we have to take. The boards that are active and they have expired, first, those will be pushed to the, then those we will discuss before we get to the inactive boards.
Right, okay. So it'll be a multi-phase approach.
Yes, thank you, that makes, thank you for the clarification.
Um, okay, anybody else got anything on this one? Uh, uh, I think that's about it, um, what we really needed to get to tonight, so, uh, all right. That went, that went pretty quick, that wasn't too painful. Um, all right, well, uh, like I said, folks, in the beginning, you know, there's, there's, uh, uh, no good and welfare type thing there, and this is just you guys listening to us having our, our conversations about some city issues, so, um, appreciate you joining us, if you, uh, hope you found it as exciting as we did, I'm saying that tongue-in-cheek to some degree, but, uh, and, uh, just a reminder, there's a, a city council meeting on Tuesday at seven, and I'll save Liz the trouble of saying it, make sure you do your census, and...
Thank you very much.
And look both ways before you cross the street and all that other good stuff, so, uh, and enjoy...
I'm pretty happy that the, uh, board work bicycling will be returned to normal hours for everyone.
Yeah, well, we'll see how it, uh, Saturday, right now, Saturday's supposed to be, uh, a nice day. Right now, Sunday's looking ugly weather-wise, but, uh, we'll see, but, um, yeah, we'll, we'll see how it works. You know, we're inching our way back to normal.
We're inching our way back to adapting to a new norm.
Well, the, whatever the new normal is, yeah. Um, so, all right, well, thanks, folks, and, uh, I guess we'll talk to you on Tuesday again, so have a good night.
Night.